She's on vacation, I think he's on vacation too.
All right, waiting on there. I'm waiting on, I'm waiting on the light. All right, thank you everyone for coming this evening. We have a proclamation for Pride Month that we're going to read before councils get started here. Uh, Pride proclamation, whereas Hopkinsville Christian County is a community that values diversity and inclusive and committed to equal rights and opportunity for all residents. And whereas every individual is equal before and under the law and has the right to equal protection and equal benefits of the law without discrimination based on race, national or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical disabilities. All human beings are born free and equal in dignity and all rights. Lesbians, gays, bisexuals, transgender, queers, intersex, asexual. The LGBTQIA+ community has made immeasurable impact to the academic, culture, civic, and economic success of our country, state, and local community.
Whereas Pride Month began in June of 1970 on the first anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, often known as the beginning of the modern LGBTQIA+ rights movement. And the first Pride March also occurred in June of 1970. Each year in June, Americans come together to celebrate and reflect on the LGBTQI+ rights movement and community. And whereas Pride Month is a time to recall the trials of the LGBTQI+ community has endured and to rejoice in the triumphs of the trailblazing individuals who have bravely fought and continue to fight for all equality. Now therefore, we, James R. Knight, Jr., Mayor of Hopkinsville, and Jerry Gillum, the Judge Executive of Christian County, along with the Human Rights Commission, do hereby proclaim June as Pride Month in Hopkinsville Christian County. We encourage all citizens to recognize the achievements of the LGBTQI+ community to celebrate their great diversity within our community and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance for all.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much, thank you. Uh, Judge Gillum couldn't be here tonight, he was out of town, but he told, thank you.
We really appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to call this evening's City Council to order. And I'd call on Ward 12, Matthew Hamby, about the invocation, please sir.
All right, thank you Mayor. Uh, my guest tonight is Mr. James Adams. He was born and raised in Hopkinsville, Kentucky. He is the son of Lindsay and Melissa Adams. He has two older sisters, Mary and Chandler. Will is currently a senior at Hopkinsville High School. He has completed both the mechanical engineering pathway at Gateway and also the business pathway at Hopkinsville High School. Will works at Hopkinsville Electric System with plans to co-op there this coming school year. And I had the pleasure of having Mr. Adams in my accounting class and he kept me on my toes. It's never a dull moment, but I'm glad to have him here with me tonight.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here, for being with us as we do. Lord, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to nurture the existing bonds of this community and to make new ones on this night as we seek to further your kingdom in this place. Lord, we ask for your continued blessing over Hopkinsville and over all of Christian County. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you sir. We all stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call on the clerk to call the robe.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox. Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
And Councilmember Handy.
Present.
All right Mayor, we have 10 here, so we do have a quorum.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll move on to item five, public hearing, and I'll call on Ms. Chrissy to take, take care of that for me.
All right, tonight we're holding a public hearing for the municipal road and local government assistance funds. Uh, this hearing's being held pursuant to KRS 174.100 and KRS 42.455. It's being held to solicit comments from the citizens regarding use of municipal road aid assistance funds in the amount of $658,000 and local government economic assistance funds in the amount of $22,000. So at this time, if you have any comments you would like to share about the use of these funds, you can come to the podium and speak, you have three minutes. This is not public comments, we'll get to that in just a little bit. This is about the public hearing for the MRA and LGEAF funds. So do we have any comments regarding those funds? Okay Mayor, I don't see anyone moving.
Thank you Chrissy, and we will get this done, published, and go from there. All right, item six, awards and recognition. I would like to have Chief Futra come to the front and his firefighters come to the front, so we can have a... And here's our young lady in the back, I see her hiding in the back, she's a little shy. But what we're here to discuss this evening is this young lady's life and what the fire department and our fire department did for them. So if we could get everyone to come on around, all the fire department come on over if they can.
So this is, this is a little bit different for us, um, but this special circumstances, and I'm going to talk about it a little bit. Um, so our men and women that, that work for us, they save lives every day. Every day, most people don't realize that, but whether it's on an ambulance or CPR or medical or house fires, we do that every day. But this one is a little bit different. This one, um, was a house fire about two o'clock in the morning, after a really long day, got paged out, person in the house, right? And so that's, that's what triggers us, is a house fire, but confirmed there's somebody in the house. And, uh, and that happens a lot, and sometimes there's somebody in there and sometimes there's not, but that's why we are here. And there's no recognition for us, there's no awards that they get for this, there's no medals, there's no points for a promotion process, because this is the expectation, right? So this is why we are here. Now ever recall, including this one, we talked about afterwards. Now I will say that I had some conversations with these men, um, afterwards. It was a private conversation that I won't share, but they know what they did because it was phenomenal. Because every second mattered on this one. So they got there, and they went in, and they, they got this young lady right here, this is Courtney, she's with us today. And she has spent some time with us, she came, no, we're not going to cry, we talked about it. We have, we have cried a lot with Courtney, uh, in good tears. So, um, to be able to go into a, a house fire in that environment where you have zero visibility, a home where you've never been in, you don't know where the doors are, you don't know where the person is, you don't know where the couches are, but to find them, pull them out of that house, start CPR in the yard, pulseless, not breathing, start CPR, get them back, put them in an ambulance, be able to know what drugs to give that person to get their heart going, and then get them to the hospital. Now I will say that we talk about it a lot, and, and I was asked the question not too long ago, you know, do we keep up with our patients afterwards? We talked about that a little bit. Courtney, we kept up with a lot. And, uh, ev- ev- every day, we, we were calling the hospital, the hospital was calling us, and there was a day that we got a phone call that, okay, she's, she's lifeless. She's, she's being sustained by machines only. We're going to pull the plug, she's not going to live. So we thought that she was gone. Uh, we, we contacted the mayor in Troy, she, she didn't make it. Well, the next day, we got another phone call, she's too stubborn to die. Thirty days, thirty days, is that right? Thirty days, thirty-one days after she went to the hospital, she walked out. Um, and that, that is an amazing story. For us, this, this story is about Courtney and her stubbornness and her, her will to live, um, because that is what we get from this. That, that means more to us, and, and it's the training and the physical ability to go in and get her, and, and just the expertise that it takes to be able to do that, and, and just the, the willpower is, is unbelievable. And they did a fantastic job, and they know they did, I told them they did. Courtney told them they did, mother told them they did, so, um, they will have that, this story they will tell their grandchildren, and they will have it the rest of their life, but this is what we do, right? Even this call, we talked about, after this call, we said, okay, how could we go harder? How could we go faster? Because this is what we are expected to do, this is why we are here. And this is what we bring to this public in this city. Uh, and we do this a lot, we do this every day. We don't talk about it, because again, we don't, they reached out to us, wanted to come and see us, and, and they know, they, they are a fire family, they know what it means to us. So, um, thank you to these men and this, this, uh, crew and this department who are experts at what they do, and this, this proves that and shows that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you to the fire department, thank you for all you do for us. We are so happy that we have you here. I was there the night that we, you brought your plaque to give to them, and we are very honored. And I will tell anybody, I'll hood my team up against anybody, and I'll tell even my council, my public works, I have an A-team in Hopkinsville. If you don't believe it, just turn around and look, every department, we have an A-team. And the fire department is no exception, they go above and beyond every day. And I have one of their old vehicles I drive, and every radio goes off non-stop every day. I mean, every day, you get in the truck from 6:30 in the morning, when I get in it, to I shut it off whatever time I get home at night, they have a call, a house fire, uh, ambulance run, or go pick someone up, and our ambulance crew and our fire department is an A-team, and my hat's off to you, thank you. Alrighty. Moving on from, uh, number six to number seven, public comments. Do we have anyone who has public comments tonight, would like to speak? No public comments? Alrighty, we get to moving right along to Mayor's comments, oh boy. Alrighty. My hats are off to the fire department, like I said. We had a good, uh, youth walk with the Baptist Unified Christian Leadership Conference, and we got a plaque and certificate from them, they done us a great job. We had a good walk from the Boys and Girls Club up here to Virginia Street Baptist, uh, had a good walk. Thanks Chief Newby and his crew for making sure the roads were blocked off and all that. Um, big thanks to Mike Perry and his crew in Parkland Recreation, Toby, Tab. We had a lot, a lot of, we had about five sleepless nights there in Blaine. Y'all really put, took, y'all done a great job. You opened the water park, we were one day late, but that wasn't our fault. That was, that was contractor fault. But, you know, y'all stayed stuck in there, worked hard. We had Tim there with us on Mike's crew.
All night.
All night, five o'clock in the morning, him and Mike left, I left at midnight, and they stuck around. I thought we were all leaving, but they didn't. But my hats are off to my crew, they done a great job, they got the water park up and on Sunday morning, we were up and moving. And health department passed us with flying colors, so yes, we have a few little bugs we have to work out, but Mike and him took care of that and got that took care of for us. Um, I'd like to call on Matthew Hamby now to come up front, we need to do some wards here, and Matthew Hamby's going to take care of that for us. Step on out front here, Matthew.
All right, so, I want him to come around here.
I'll come around.
Okay.
I'm going to dress up as you did, but I'll come around.
Probably one of the, um, highlights of, of here so far. I get to honor and, with the mayor and my, uh, city council cohorts, to our simpler and all they do, um, I would like to, uh, recognize this award to Raquel Mills in recognition of his excellence, efforts, and achievement in being accepted into Harvard University. And this second one, um, is very special. Um, the city would like to recognize DeMichael Hall in recognition for his excellence, efforts, and achievement in being the first in his family to graduate high school. Uh, the city of Hopkinsville recognizes you for your hard work and dedication, and congratulates you for becoming a 2023 Hopkinsville High School graduate.
Thank you Matthew for helping me do that, and thank you to these two outstanding young men for their achievements, and congratulations on all that. And that can continue, ends the Mayor's comments, and we get to move on to reports. Yes, I'm fixing to call on Pastor Tom Britton.
Thank you Mayor, council members. You have in your packet the recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding the original zoning of Peachtree Place subdivision. Uh, as I mentioned to council previously, we're in the process of zoning properties that have been annexed into the city over the last several years. Uh, this is the starting point. We received a petition from residents in the subdivision requesting this zoning to R2 presently unzoned. The property has been developed, and if you're familiar with Peachtree, all but one lot in the subdivision has been developed. The zoning we're recommending corresponds with the existing development of units in that subdivision. Uh, the commission found that it was in agreement with the comprehensive plan as well as in agreement with established development patterns. Uh, this is being brought to you, favorable recommendation for council action. If any council members have any questions, be happy to answer them.
I'd like to move, we send this to our clerk to have, what we're doing, MO, ordinance drafted in a second. I got Steve Keel with the clerk, and the second over there, but Don?
I got the meeting right this time.
What's that?
I got the meeting right this time.
That's right. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Old Concord Lane rezoning, that's back to you Tom.
Yes sir, thank you Mr. Mayor. Mayor, council members, you have in your packet a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Uh, we received a rezoning application from Ronald Francis and Alan Rogers affecting approximately 25 acres on Old Concord Lane. The property is currently zoned I2, uh, they have requested rezoning to R4. The commission held a public hearing and found this to be in agreement with the comprehensive plan in that the comprehensive plan encourages development in the northern areas of the city. Uh, in addition, as a result of recent physical, social, economic changes, uh, we've had a proliferation of I2 zoned properties in the southern portion of the city, which diminishes the need for industrial zoning, uh, for this tract. Uh, this comes to you with a favorable recommendation. If any council members have any questions, be happy to answer them.
I'd like to make the same motion about this one. Second by Mr. Marsh, any discussion? Seeing none, moving forward, alibi, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, that passes, thank you Tom. Uh, item 10, approval of amendments.
Toby, second.
I got Natasha and Jamie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, moving right along on that. Item 12, ordinance, uh, 13 dash 2023, operational budget amendment.
Ms. Chrissy. Amending the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. By summary, section one of ordinance 5, 2023, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023, is amended as follows. Revenues, general fund, $45,825,526. Municipal road aid fund, $660,000. Prior year revenue, $630,471. Total revenues, $47,115,997. Expenses, general fund, $46,455,997. Municipal road aid fund, $660,000. Total expenses, $47,115,997. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the city of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Come on. Second.
Matthew and Jamie. Alrighty, any discussion, any? Clerk call the robe.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman, and Councilmember Craig's absent, so that's it, this passes unanimously on first reading.
Alrighty, ordinance 14 dash 2023, uh, capital budget amendment, first reading.
Amending the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual capital equipment and property replacement budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that section one of ordinance 8, 2023, amending the fiscal year 2022, 2023 capital equipment and property replacement budget is amended as follows. Revenues, transfer firm general fund, $1,842,142. Transfer firm general funds wins additional insurance premium, $168,100. Transfer firm general fund, police department, $170,068. Prior year capital reserve, $95,722. Total capital revenues, $2276,032. Expenses, information technology, $100,000. Police department, $500,068. Fire department, $292,000. City maintenance, $249,826. Service center, $127,000. Parks and Recreation, $145,000. Sports play, $65,000. Agencies, $50,000. Buildings and properties, $747,138. Total capital expenses, $2276,032. Any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Come on. Second.
Alright, I got it. Keel and Jamie, alright, clerk call the robe.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek. Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Alright Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
Okay, ordinance 15 dash 2023, uh, operational budget, first reading.
Adopting the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, by summary, the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget of the city of Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, general fund, $47,270,332. Municipal road aid fund, $683,722. Prior year revenue, $173,909. Total revenues, $48,127,963. Expenses, general fund, $47,438,269. Municipal road aid fund, $683,722. Total expenses, $48,121,991. Surplus, $5,972. Section two adopts the classification and compensation plan pursuant to chapter 30 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances. Section three sets authorization to enter into contracts or agreements within budgeted allocations. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the city of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Come on. Second.
I got a Steve Keel and Councilman Martin.
Court.
Any discussion before we move on? Alright, let's call the robe.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
And Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Alright Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
Alright, ordinance 16 dash 2023, FYI, 2324, capital budget.
Ms. Chrissy, after you get a drink.
Adopting the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual capital equipment and property replacement budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. The fiscal year 2324 capital equipment and property replacement budget of the city of Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues: Transfer from General Fund $1,790,099; Transfer from General Fund wins additional insurance premium $132,685; Transfer from General Fund Police Department $173,909; Total Capital Revenues $2,096,693. Expenses: Administration $70,000; Information Technology $70,000; Police $473,909; Fire $320,000; City Maintenance $470,000; Parks and Recreation $140,000; Buildings and Properties $550,000; Total Capital Expenses $2,093,909; Surplus $2,784. Section 2, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to acquire capital equipment or services within the allocations listed in this ordinance. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmities shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Any and all existing ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect July 1, 2023 after its passage and publication according to law.
All move. Got Mr. Bell and Mr. Meek. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're need to roll.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley. Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
And Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
All right, Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
Ordinance 17-2023, Classification and Composition Plan.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 30 Employee Classification and Compensation Plan of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, section 30.20 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. 30.20, City Council to provide pay steps within pay grades. It shall be the sole responsibility of City Council to provide pay steps within the pay grade sufficient to provide for continued recruitment and retention of qualified personnel to carry out the goals and objectives established by the mayor, city council, and local, state, and federal laws. This will be approved by City Council as outlined in section 30.17 herein. Section 2, section 30.22 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. Shift differential pay. City Council hereby establishes shift differential pay for sworn employees of the Police Department, Emergency Communications Center dispatchers, and Public Works employees assigned work during scheduled second and third shifts. Differential pay shall be as follows. Second shift, $3.50 per hour; Third shift, $4.00 per hour. Section 3, section 30.02B2 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. City Administrator. Compensation for the city administrator is established and fixed at the sum established by City Council through the annual budget. Powers and duties are set forth in KRS 83A.090 of the employee, and the employee job description. Section 4, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmities shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
All move.
Second.
Got Bruce and Travis. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
And Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
All right, Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
All righty. Ordinance 18-2023, Central Avenue always stops.
Establish always stops on Central Avenue now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows pursuant to KRS 189.337 and section 70.03A of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances. Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the installation of stop signs on Central Avenue at its intersections with Broad Street, College Street, and Jones Street. Any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmities shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law and upon posting of the appropriate signage by the Public Works Department.
All move. Second. Mr. Marsh and Travis. All righty. Any discussion? Seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
And Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
All right, Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
All righty. Ordinance 19-2023, East Ninth Street Corridor rezoning, first reading.
Amending the zoning max of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, East Ninth Street Corridor. Whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their April 24, 2023 meeting for City Council to approve rezoning application R2341. And whereas City Council concurs said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan, the existing classification is inappropriate and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the rezoning. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 100.11 Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services, recommendation dated April 24, 2023, the following properties as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein are hereby rezoned from I-1 Light Industrial District to B-3 Central Business District. A .159 acre vacant lot located on East Eighth Street, parking lot on the northeastern corner of East Ninth and South Clay Streets, 401 and 405 East Ninth Street, 409 East Ninth Street, 425 East Ninth Street, 416 East Ninth Street, 418 East Ninth Street, 420 East Ninth Street, 912 South Clay Street, 500 East Ninth Street, 803 South Campbell Street, 807 South Campbell Street, 514 East Ninth Street, 505 East Ninth Street. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for an reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmities shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
All move.
Second.
I've got Steve and Jay Bill. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll get you to call the roll there.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
And Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
All right, we get to go to item 12, municipal orders, 26-23, road and sidewalk maintenance interlocal agreement.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the attached interlocal cooperation agreement between the county of Christian, Kentucky and the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky for road and sidewalk maintenance.
All move.
Second.
I got Travis and Jamie. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that moves on that one. Item B, ordinance 27-2023, Forbes Drive Extension Street Acceptance.
Whereas Community and Development Services made a favorable recommendation at their May 22, 2023 meeting to accept Forbes Drive extension into the city's maintenance program. And whereas the Public Works Department has determined the streets meet the standards of the Hopkinsville Public Improvement specifications, and whereas KRS 82.400 and 100.277 set forth the requirements for acceptance of streets by cities, now therefore be it ordered Hopkinsville City Council hereby acknowledges by operation of law acceptance of Forbes Drive extension as depicted on the plat attached here to and incorporated herein by reference into the City of Hopkinsville effective July 6, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Marsh and Mr. Smiley. Get you next time, Matthew. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Going to item 13, executive order, executive order 39-2023, Hopkinsville and Christian County Airport Board.
Effective immediately, Clay Travis shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville and Christian County Airport Board to fill the unexpired term of Mark Gary. This term shall expire November 30, 2024, and we do need a motion.
All move.
Second.
I got, I take Travis and Smiley this time, right? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Executive Order 40-2023, Hopkinsville Christian County Convention Center and Visitor Bureau.
Effective July 1, 2023, Chip Miles and Mary Beth Tomazuski shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville and Christian County Convention and Visitors Bureau. These terms shall expire June 30, 2026. No action is necessary.
All righty. Executive Order 41-2023, City Clerk.
All right, I'm gonna try not to cry.
(laughing). Been a long time.
Effective August 1, 2023, Brittany Byram shall be appointed City Clerk for the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and we do need a motion.
All move. Pick one. Everybody. Everybody still got one, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
You should make sure to talk about that one.
Congratulations, Ms. Brittany.
Make her nervous a little bit.
Y'all leave her alone, I've already do that enough. All righty, we'll move on to item 14, other, any other comments we need to talk about? All righty. Councilman comments. All right, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to Elijah Underhill. He's a senior at Christian County High School this year. He was named Mr. Baseball today in the state of Kentucky this afternoon. It's a huge accomplishment for that kid, and our community should be very, very proud of him. He's played, he started playing with the Hoppers. He was gonna play with us for about three weeks, his, his schedule didn't work out. But I got to be around that kid for a couple weeks, and he is a really, really good kid, and I'm just extremely proud of that kid and his accomplishments, so.
He's an exceptional young man, he's precious to us.
I have one this way.
Yes.
I, I'd just like a shout out to Chief Newby and the local police department, 'cause on Friday, 26th May, I had a drug give back day. It was pretty successful, we had a nice big bag of prescription drugs that was turned in, and I know it was right in the height of high school graduation, and there was a lot going on, but shout out, Chief, thanks, you and your staff were stellar, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Right. Any other council comments?
Thank you, Ms. Lineberger.
All righty, we have now, I need a motion to go into closed session. All move.
Second.
Second.
For the record, this is pursuant to KRS 61.8101G.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, we will move into closed session. Thank y'all, ladies and gentlemen.